Let's call the meeting to order. And Dustin, if you will call the role. Actually, it looks like everybody's here tonight. I think so. Diane Landers?
Here.
James Henshaw?
Here.
Cindy Roberts?
Here.
Jennifer Elliott?
Here.
Carrie Mitchell?
Here.
Wally Wolf?
Here.
Donnie DeFoe?
Here.
Alrighty. And I think, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting, which, much to our amazement, was six months ago, September 11th. I think we're kind of thankful for that, perhaps. I don't believe I was here that night, because I'd got caught up on a project. And so, has everyone had a chance to approve them? And any suggestions for changes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will call the questions. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Now, I noticed that we have an agenda before us, but Dustin says we have the authority to spare these people a little bit. And we'll move the replat of the Red Bud Lake issue up to item number four. And then our yearly reorganization of the planning commission will become number five. And that'll kind of let you folks not have to suffer through some us arguing over who has to be president.
Arguing or saying, "Not it, not it."
Not it, not it, not it. Okay. Well, with that, Dustin, could you kind of give the board a background of the issue on the Red Bud Lake?
The, what you're looking at is you're looking at the replat for Red Bud. The Association had, Thad Reynolds come to me and discuss what options were available. And he talked about what regulations were in place and what regulations Red Bud has specifically for itself. And when we went through the replat, they had, the Association and Thad kind of worked together on it based on the regulations I've provided. And they submitted what you're looking at on paper. I know it's kind of small on the paper. They had to do a, they had a review halfway through. So what you're looking at there is accurate. It's the, on the one and the same on the board here. They have one lot line change. Who else did hear it? It was a flag error they had to fix. And other than that, it is the same. And if you'll, I know you can't read it, but I'm kind of right here. I'll zoom in on it. The biggest issue as far as notes are right here. These are the notes for the plat. And the bottom two are what's going to be start of discussion, I guess, would be for you guys. Any property not in blocks one through four? And that's, because Red Bud Lake is two parcels. It has the north half and the south half, because it's divided by a section. But the plat itself is considered one plat. So it's still broken up into blocks. They remain under ownership of Red Bud Lake Association. This allows all lots access over and across. And then number seven on the notes, all of roadway within the boundary of Red Bud Lake Association will be owned and maintained by Red Bud Lake Association. That right there means that the township is not responsible for the roadway inside, and the area is the county. The Association is responsible.
And that's not changed. That's the way it has to be.
That's, that's the way it's always been. It's just that this is now on the plat itself.
Official.
So.
You know, that print's challenging my back up.
That, that print on that page challenges a lot of people's microscopes. Because the original came out 24 by 36, so.
Senior friend like that. Okay. Well, the, so I guess the next question is, should we have someone from the Red Bud Lake Association speak to us tonight? Representing the Association?
Actually, I think they're.
Please identify yourself.
My name's Eric Kayet. I live out at Red Bud and was appointed by the Association to kind of help work with Dustin on the project. I think we're here, I mean, we just kind of were handing him with the county. We come to him, told him, you know, kind of our ideas and what we needed to have done. We've got, we've had our regular meetings, notified our members, voted on it. Everybody's come into agreement with the boundary lines. It shows a win-win situation for our little community out there. It allows people to eventually own their land. Housing market can improve. Just makes a win-win situation. Everything that's done's kind of been through the county with their guidance. We really appreciate your help. Drawn the plat, followed the regulations with Thad. And, you know, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
I guess one question I would have is, what prompted the change? I mean, what is changing though? Why does, what necessitates meeting, I guess?
Beforehand, the lots were haphazard. And they were, they were official, but they were not, they were owned by the Association, not people. And in order for people, they, they sat down and said, "Okay, if you're going to purchase your land, where do you want your land to be?" Was the big gist of everything.
So they had houses on property they didn't own?
So some, some houses crossed lot lines, stuff like that. So, so they went ahead and redrew based on where people's houses were and where the land that they wanted to own is. And then this came out.
Because I seem to recall when we drafted the, maybe you can help here, Wally, when we drafted the planning regulations, Red Bud wasn't an issue. And we kind of carved out an exemption for them?
Yes, they have their own specific regulations. And that's what these lots were designed, these lots and replat were designed for.
Okay.
We just kind of cleaned them up and made a good recovery.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong. This is going to help then with your housing market, because you currently lease your land. And a large number of the buyers nowadays are getting the government-backed loans. And in order to get a government-backed loan, you cannot purchase leased land. It has to be land that is owned. So this will help with your housing, correct?
Correct. I think other lakes are falling suit, like Council Grove, City Lake.
And there was one down Harrington, too, I believe, that we had to discuss.
Yeah. They, they had to, they had to do an official plat for the same reason.
People are, yeah.
It just makes sense.
It does. I think they were lake cabins 20, you know, 50 years ago. And now they're actually homes and residents, and it kind of goes from there, so.
And what, like I, like I said in the letter, what we're deciding on is the legitimacy of the plat itself, not if they can replat. That's actually up to them to decide to replat. It's all about whether or not the plat meets the requirements for the regulation.
That's where you come into play, does it meet the regulations?
We sat down and we went through pretty much, probably once a month for about two months to begin with. And then with Thad Reynolds, when I began doing it, it was all based on the regulations and stuff they had. So the regulations were the foundation for the design of the new lots.
It allows us to also kind of piggyback off the county, something which is following there soon.
Is there any controversy?
There was, I think, some confusion. At first, there was, you know, controversy that nobody was informed. There was a lot of heated discussion, as with anything, in change. But I think some of the most adversary are waiting for us to get this done, because they didn't understand it. I can't say that there's never going to be a controversy, but when somebody goes to sell their property down the road, it will, you know, with the market and everything else, it'll allow people to buy, sell. Would bring positive, you know, increase to value for your property.
That's when I really realized that it was for the benefit.
Correct, yeah. Everybody drew out the flags, everybody put it out. We put it out in another meeting. We come back in another meeting, gave everybody the opportunity to do what they got. We also want to, you know, another part of this piece is to be able to, you know, help fix our lake. Make it a good, show them a hole for the kids.
It has been kind of wobbly, as I recall what happened.
That's correct.
Do you have an understanding? What are you going to do? I mean, is it, is it, it's pretty sandy. Does it have any clay in it, or is that the challenge?
Yeah. We, we haven't got that part yet. We're trying to finish this piece. And then we'll go to the, we'll form a committee to kind of figure out what we're going to do from there. But we're trying to tackle one challenge at a time, so we're not getting too many things going.
Commissioner Knoll spent some time working on your books, I think, or receipts or something. He was talking one time about a long time ago. And as I understand it, Dustin, that the, this has been published in the paper, but no comment of?
No public comments.
And so your recommendation is that we approve the plat?
Based, based on the existing regulation, it's, it's essentially the same plat, it's just more official.
Should I go through the golden factor of this? We have a little procedure whereby, thanks to courts and stuff, that we need to go through kind of, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the planning commission? Thank you for all attending tonight. The courts have kind of ruled in the past that the planning commissions need to kind of go through a set of factors to consider, so that if there's any legal challenges, we can show that we have considered all those things. And it's kind of for your protection or our protection, so it makes everybody happy. Except the lawyers, perhaps, which is a good thing. We, one of the items of the golden rule, golden factors is whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and the purpose of these regulations. Yes. The criteria for plating has been established previously, and it meets those criteria. One item, another factor is the character and the condition of the surrounding neighborhood and its effect on the proposed change. The proposed changes would allow for a few more homes to be built in the area, and would allow for the sale of land, proceeds to go into repairs of the road and water certain structures of the site. So it's like a positive development. Another golden factor is whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of the changed or changing conditions in the area affected. And if so, the nature of such changes or changing conditions. Proposed changes to the plat are of no direct result of the changing conditions. The, another factor we need to consider is the current zoning and the uses of nearby properties, and the effect on existing nearby land uses upon such a change in classification. And it appears that there'd be no changes to the properties nearby or their land uses. Another item is whether every use that would be permitted on the property has reclassified and would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property in the immediate vicinity. Red Bud has its own zoning classification, so this allows for such uses to be maintained in that area only. The suitability of applicants' property for the uses to which it is being restricted, the uses permitted are permitted under the previously mentioned zoning classification, so it's acceptable. The, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant or underdeveloped as zoned, provided the use of land for agricultural purposes, considered as viable use of land and not considered as allowing the land to be vacant or undeveloped, obviously, this is not applicable. Whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services, including transportation, exist and can be provided to serve the uses that then would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified. Adequate sewer and water is provided by the city of Abilene. That's relatively new development, isn't it?
I'm not sure how long it's been out there.
It's been, about three years, or we actually have room for all that.
Because of the challenge, because there was a ridge, I think.
Yeah.
Yep. The general amount of vacant land that currently has the same zoning classification proposed for the subject property, particularly in the vicinity of the subject property, and any spatial circumstances that make a substantial part of such vacant land is available or not available for development. This is really not applicable. The recommendations are permanent or professional staff. It is the recommendation of the staff to approve the replat as presented. It allows for expansion and betters the overall conditions of the Red Bud properties. Item K, whether the proposed amendment would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the comprehensive plan. This is in the, in the conformance to our comprehensive plan. Whether the relative gain in public health, safety, and general welfare outweighs the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property to access classified classification, it's not really applicable. Such other factors as may be relevant from the facts and evidence presented in the application. The major question of this replat is the responsibility of the road around Red Bud Lake. The replat is designed to allow the Red Bud Lake associations to retain control and maintenance responsibilities of the road and all associated structures within the boundaries of the Red Bud Lake zoning district. And with that, our staff recommendations is approval of the request of replat, based on the understanding that this measure is being allowed down to allow the residents of Red Bud Lake own the land under their homes, and to allow for future expansion of new residents. Is there any discussion on the part of the planning commission? Any further discussion, questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
I move we approve the replat of the Red Bud Lake Association.
Second?
Second. No, send, go ahead, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion of this matter before the planning commission? If not, I would call the question. And all in favor, raise your right hand. Is it unanimous? With that, congratulations. I think you have a replat.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thanks for what Lumen was up to.
Sure you don't want to stay?
I think it'll be okay.
And just pray for rain to fill the lake.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and get ahold of me, so that I can get the, the mild air. And then I can start taking some care of the mission. Vote on it. Three weeks.
Okay. We'll get a call in bar. Thank you.
Yep.
Always makes me nervous, and the river's full of people.
Positive people, it's pretty wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the yearly reorganization of the planning commission. Dustin, what does that entail?
You guys decided who's going to be first, second, and I'm still stuck as tail. So I tried, I looked, and apparently I have to have you guys approve the regulation change to make me nonsecretary anymore, so. So, but other than that, it's just you guys deciding who's going to be in charge and such. And then after that, we discuss comprehensive plan, and if we think we're still following that, and if we need to make updates to it. And any regulations you think we need to visit or adjust.
Well, but I guess the first thing is, obviously, I have to say what, I am president, I guess.
Chairman.
Chairman. Excuse me, I'm the president of the school, so I forget, I forget my titles. It's, it's up to anyone here who wants to be chairman. I mean, is there a limitation? Have I been, there's a limitation in the regulations?
Yes.
In the bylaws?
Yeah, the bylaws. I'm just going to pause a little bit, show people, I apologize.
Well, I just had to think about that, because I think that's how Wally can use it, one year.
Thank you for the term. You may not be so lucky.
Oh, I know.
Okay, let's see. Terms of office. Three are terms for the actual board. And chairman and vice chair shall be elected to an annual meeting and serve a term of one year until their successors are elected, and up to three years, if I'm not mistaken, by section five. No person shall be eligible to hold the office of chairman or vice chairman for more than three full consecutive one-year terms. Sadly, you're on year two.
Our saying is, you can retain your position.
Wow. Well, I mean, if anyone else would like it, I mean, I'd be happy to do it. But if anyone else would like it, I mean, I, you know.
You do a great job. Jennifer has shown great leadership with that, too.
Yes, yes, she has.
She would be a great chairman as well. So if you want out, there may be an opportunity there for you to get out.
Okay.
I'm, I'm happy either way.
Same way with me, so it doesn't matter. So can you, can, can she be vice chairman for three years, then move it to be chairman?
I would think so.
Can who?
Yeah.
That's, that's a pretty perfect situation.
Yeah. I'll leave all the controversial meetings to you.
No, wait a minute. It'll be gone for them. He'll take, is he saying he'll take the easy meetings?
So that means you want to be the chairperson, and then give him the vice chair seat, and then you can skip out on the controversial one.
I think I owe you a controversial meeting here, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we retain the current two folks in their position, chairman and vice chair, and nomination ceases.
A second. Still your meeting? Can really not work? I mean, that sounds fine. I mean, I think, do we need to take a vote on that?
I think it needs to be in the, in official minutes that we did vote.
Right. Yes, okay. The nominations, you moved the nomination ceases, is that correct?
Correct.
So then, is there any further discussion? If not, then I would call the question, to retain the current chairman and vice chairman for another year. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's unanimous. Okay. Let's go on to item six. The home occupation to firearm and retail consultants. Could you explain that maybe?
Sure. Currently, we have a very broad list of what we consider home occupation in the county. Currently, home occupation is listed as, it has a list of about 15, 20 things. And then it also says at the top, but this list is not all-inclusive. So it can be pretty much anything, that anyone could deem an at-home business, it then falls under traffic and such things. But at the moment, there are, I have had quite a few requests for permitting for things like Mary Kay, Cincy, that, stuff like that, as a retail sales consultant, because they can get tax breaks if they're classified as commercial. But they can't be classified as commercial without a permit, as far as their, the taxing is concerned. And if it's not specifically listed, there's no permit I can issue. And the same thing goes for firearm sales. I've had quite a few people that they want to be brokers. It's not people who are wanting to create stores, but they want to do it more as a hobby, get two or three guns in, you know, at a time, and sell them to their buddies or whatnot. But they still have to do that through the ATF. And the ATF says no, because there, it doesn't plainly state in our home occupation list that firearm brokers are allowed as a home occupation. And so I have to write them a letter and everything that says that yes, it is considered home occupation, because there's no increase in traffic, they don't have their own building. After these criteria, they hit their own. But I just wanted to throw the idea for you guys to include those two as actual listed items, that I can then adjust to, to show on the home occupation list.
Do we need to adopt this this evening, or?
We don't have to adopt it this evening. I just, because I still have to get the language to Doug Thompson to change, and we have to see if we have to adjust anything. This is more just discussion, so that we can do it at a later date.
To see if we have any concerns about?
Right. Because I have to put in the article numbers and the actual, or the actual regulation numbers to, to adjust and provide the actual language. But I just wanted to talk to you guys and see how I felt about it before I threw it at you and said, "Hey, approve this regulation."
I can tell you, I work with that a little bit, too, with the city of Harrington Planning and Zoning. And if you've got it on the list, it's so much easier to say, "Yes, we can do that." And if you don't, then you have to go, "Well, how can I make it fit in here?" In some cases, you don't want it to fit. But if it's on the list, it's pretty much easier to make the decision.
Yes, and I was kind of curious what retail consultants were, but your explanation kind of answered that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's at-home sales for, you know, where they bring you the merchandise and they go, you know, do that.
I'd say that business is exploding.
Yeah, it is. It's really huge.
A lot of those people doing a lot of that.
So, let me see if I can get our list here. There's the definition for home occupation. Any occupation or activity which is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the premises. So obviously, if their primary use is still living. Sign premises, business signs for home occupation, if the sign allows. This is where it says, under the supplementary uses, that this is an okay thing to do, that you don't have to get a conditional use permit for. Things like agriculture products, stuff like that, as a farm operator, you don't actually have to get conditional use permitting for that. Homeschooling and, and home occupations are in there. And this is the list, such as, but not limited to, the following.
Dentist is a little weird.
I thought physician was just as weird.
That is a little strange. That's true. I didn't get that. I'm not coming to your house to have you fill a cavity.
Yeah, you know, it'd be a little strange. So I thought either we need to, you know, like I said, add those two things, or actually revisit the occupation list entirely, do away with, but not limited to, and actually work on a comprehensive list of what we would consider at-home occupation.
How old is this list?
2009.
Oh, hmm.
Yep.
That's the problem you get into if you start listing things. Because you, you'll always find something that crops up that's not on the list.
Because the, you know, the, right now, what we have is, is it's decent, because most of those things you can kind of look at without having increased traffic, and you can say, you know. But things like physician or dentist, they have to have their own building, or their own specific cutoff area, which means that area is primary use of that function. They can do it in their home, but they have to have a specialized area to do it in their home. You know, and I don't know how that works for health regulations or anything. From there, the, the health regulations may say they don't, you know, they can't do that. They may have to have their own building. I'd have to look into that further. But for the most part, most of those you can look at and go, "Yeah, you know, that's an in-home business."
I would say if you would have the time to do a little research on other, what other counties have as their list, and compare ours a little bit, and see if, if you feel that, you know, there's some changes that need to be made there, or if we want to rework it.
Okay.
We'd have to have something to go off of.
Yeah. I had talked to Celine in Junction, and, oh, Celine Gary and Marion, just to kind of see. And they have had a lot of requests for firearm addition as well. I'm actually going to the Kansas Planning and Zoning Conference last week of April, and there are a lot of counties who are getting the requests because of the current gun stuff happening in the government there, talking, you know, there's a lot of people requesting, which means the ATF is making a lot of phone calls, and counties are having to look at this list a lot more frequently. So for us, we're pretty much okay, but I'd like to, for, it's more a matter of convenience at this point to add it to the list, so that I can say, "Well, per regulation, this subsection of this is considered an at-home occupation in the ATF's line."
I think the two that you mentioned that we need to add are, I mean, are fine to add.
Okay.
And if we still want to review the list and see if there's anything else we're missing, I think that's fine, too.
So would you like me to kind of get you, you guys, a comparison of, here's what other counties have, here's what the language would look like with these added, you know, what else we're going to do?
Yeah, if we're going to work on it anyway, we might as well make it the way it is to be now.
Yeah. The word, the thing that bothered me just a little bit is consultants. Whether that's, whether it should be retail marketers or retail something, that word consultant.
Then that's, that's something, like I said, something we'll have to discuss with Doug to get the, you know, the actual term that we need to use for there. Because I know that they call, Cincy, they call them, you know, they call them sales consultants, because that's what they do.
And Mary Kay is consultants and all of that.
And those are the big requests that I've been getting, so that's kind of where I based it off of. But, but for instance, retail sales, technically firearms fall under that, because they're reselling firearms. So, from a manufacturer, so that's resale. So, I mean, you know, they can fall under that. So there's, there are things, just like you said, every time you start listing, you find stuff that, you know, you can just keep making lists of lists of lists all day long. But.
Well, do you suppose when they made this list, there was people that fell underneath a lot of those categories, so that's why this has doctors and dentists on it?
When I was talking to Dave, you're out with Gary County, he said when, when they sat down and worked on these regulations, that they were taking into account a lot of things that were already in the county, so that, so that they weren't taking people and saying, "Okay, now you're non-conforming, you have to fix it." They tried to take as much as they could of stuff that was already out there.
He's working for Gary County now?
He's, he's Gary County. Yep.
Where does home daycare fall in?
Don't know.
Okay. I would say that.
I'd say that'd be one major category that probably should be on this list.
Let's see. Although I think...
It's in there somewhere. It's got to be.
Might actually be under its own.
I think it is, because we had certain criteria, didn't we?
Yeah, I think so.
I think.
I don't...
I would say it would have to be mentioned somewhere.
Children's playhouses, attended care facility. Child care center. There it is. Facility licensed by the state of Kansas to provide the date that a care of not more than ten, but under fourteen years of ages. Not more than six of whom are kindergarten age between six a.m. and nine p.m. But it isn't in the list as an at-home business, so...
And maybe it needs to be.
You have to take into account that if you have this many kids, you've got increased traffic to the area, you've got increased road usage all the time. My mom, for instance, as an example, and when I was about twelve, my mom had a daycare. And we had, on average, about twelve, thirteen kids at a time. So, you know, she was licensed by the state. We had the people, I remember in grade school, you know, middle school, we had the people coming out to check the house and all that stuff. So, you know, they are out there in the county. There's quite a few of them, but there was quite a bit of increased road traffic too. So, because twice a day, every day.
I guess the consensus of the committee is we should probably look at the list and update it and compare it to the other counties and see whether...
I'll get, I'll get kind of a comprehensive list of the surrounding counties and find out what they're doing. We can compare and go from there.
Okay. And then the item seven on the agenda is reducing land requirements for proposed lot splits. Could you maybe?
I had kind of spoken with Donita a little bit about this briefly when I was kind of working on it. I don't have any specific language for it. I've been working again with Dave, you're out, trying to get some. Marion County, Marion County has something called a homestead agricultural lot split, which is for parcels that have an island essentially, where they've got, the homestead was, you know, a quarter mile up into the parcel, because that's where the water was and everything else is farmland around it. Currently, we consider those landlocked. If they're existing now, and they have existed, they're considered existing legal non-conforming. Until someone goes to do something with it, they have to then buy X feet wide all the way down to the road. And after talking to some of the local banks, they are a lot more hesitant anymore to loan on ten and twenty acres. They're starting to do five acres. They prefer three, but they're okay with five. We have regulation in place for two and a half acres, but it has to be platted. That's what we call a rural residential. You've got to have the rural residential in front. There's been a couple of times where I've been able to, after talking with Doug and talking with Brad, been able to file an exemption for families splitting out land for their, you know, for family help, you know, aging family and that kind of thing. We've done a few exemptions there. But on a whole, I've been, you know, sticking to the six sixty by six sixty rule for the ag forty areas. And the thirteen twenty by thirteen twenty rule, I've had a lot of people turn that away and I don't know if they split land or not. If, because frankly, they don't have to come to me to split land. It's only if they want to build on it after they've split it. I can't stop the splitting of land. I can't stop the sale of land. They can do whatever they want with their land until they go to build on it, and then I have to determine if it's been a legal split or not. And what we, and after talking with Randy, the Sanitarian, our sanitation code doesn't always match up with our regulations. The sanitation code says that on two and a half acres, if it's platted, just like we have, that's okay. You can, you can have a septic tank as long as it's platted. But then his next jump is three, and then five. My next jump is ten, and then twenty. So what I would like to do is either talk about adding a clause into rural residential to allow platted for two and a half, non-platted at five acres. And, and that's about four hundred and fifty feet by four hundred and fifty feet. That gives a little bit of a breakage, so that it's not small lots for people to come out and make, you know, live out in the country, but have a little home. So that they, they still maintain a little bit of farmland. And if it's under the rural residential, it still allows them to do agriculture stuff with that five acres. The ten acres, what I'm finding is a lot of times people, when they go to split, they'll split the chunk out and then, then they don't want to split out the farmland. Because you've got cropland and then getting six sixty by six sixty in a perfect square in an area where there's not going to be farmland is a little, is a little difficult out in the county. It's been working for us so far, you know, so it's nothing that's, that has to change. It's just something that I thought we could look into. Because I think it'd make it easier for people who are starting to sell farmland. Because it also, not only affects sales, it also affects family members who are trying to split land off for their family. You know, successors for farms, stuff like that. You can't split off land, you know, unless you follow the exact regulations we have for it. And in some areas, the difference of a hundred feet determines whether or not you're an ag forty or ag eighty. So the distance of a hundred feet determines whether or not you need ten acres or twenty acres. So it's just something that I thought we could look at and discuss and kind of get a feel for what we, what we'd like to do, or if we can do anything at all. But I'd like, I was hoping that Dave was supposed to send me some of the homestead stuff that described a little bit how they do it. But he didn't get it too many times, so I was hoping to have something else for you guys to look at to kind of show, so that I could describe kind of what they were doing. But they have, Marion County does it so that anything that's not conforming, their exception rule for land division only goes through you guys. In Marion County, they have hearings about, people have to make a case for why they want this separate, you know, why they want to not adhere to the regulations. And it doesn't go through the Board of Zoning Appeals, because they're not appealing the decision. But there's an exception, is that they can bring the case in front of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission can determine if that case fits a need for an exception.
I can remember the discussion when we adopted these regs. Do you remember all the, the phrase was called the, I guess Dave had a phrase for like pipe stem property or something?
Flags, flag pole.
Yeah, right.
Flagpole parcels.
You couldn't just own a lane up and in, yeah. And we had one of them like that over Solomon that one time there on the north side, yeah.
And we still have quite a few of those out in the county. And, and, and the problem is, is what they had, is they had their, they had their lane up to the middle where the farmland was, and they did that. Well, we can't allow them to do that anymore by the regulations. But some people are now having to buy.
But if, so what you're concerned is if they had ten acres at the end of the flagstaff, flagpole.
No.
Or twenty.
No, no, they have, the thing is, is they, it's, it's not so much a question of acreage. I, I use acreage as, as the reference, but it's actually footage, it's front footage. They have to have so much frontage on the road. So let's say, for instance, that the, the house, the home site is fifteen hundred feet back from the road. They have to own six sixty wide.
From the road.
From the road, all the way straight back to where their house is.
And you're saying that banks are not, not liking to lend the money for ten and twenty acres?
Back then, they were. They were okay with that. Now they want to see less. And I've talked to three of the local banks and they're, they're, they were hesitant about loaning anything over ten.
Considering the price of land and the price of building.
It's so expensive, yeah.
Earlier, you said they prefer three acres. Is that, is that a consistent message from them?
Yeah. We don't have a three acre, we do, but it's, the plating kind of allows, you know, the, the two and a half, they're okay with that. But the, but they're, they're preferring three acres, but they're, most of them say they're okay with five. Because what they'll do is they'll take five and they'll say, okay, you got three acres for your home site, that's what we're going to loan on. And...
To drive economic activity, we ought to try to align with the banks. I mean, they're, they're not going to tell us what to do, but certainly should try to align with that to drive, you know, economic activity.
It's kind of my thinking and wanting to approach, because I've had a lot of people come in that I've had to go, you need to find ten acres somewhere. You know, and I, but I also, and like Donita and I described or talked about, we also don't want to get into the situation where we had with, with Maiden's Feed Lot down south, where we had some people move in. They owned, you know, a small acreage because they wanted to live in the country, but they bought a small acreage. And then they realized that living in the country involves the smell of cow dung and dust. And so what you get is you get people, if they can afford to buy three acres, they move to the country to live the country experience, but they don't realize what all that entails. So I was also considering, and I don't know how legal this is, this again is a talk for Doug, of having people sign a memorandum of understanding.
That's a good idea.
After that lawsuit, I think that's almost just...
Yeah, just an acknowledgement of, of this is, this is what a rural residential property will, you know, potentially will...
The gravel road will end up...
Yeah, there will be smoke. They burn pasture. And you can list some examples. There will be livestock. There will be machinery. There will be... And they just need to acknowledge by signing it.
You're going to have to drive in the ditch.
Well, and I would think that, you know, if we're not forcing people to buy ten acres at a time, we, we are taking less out of ag production. I mean, because they're going to sell it regardless. People are going to move out there, but if they, you know. If they're buying ten acres, they're probably not going to continue to farm that. It's going to be a big yard.
In looking at the comprehensive plan, it speaks a lot of developing the areas along the paved roads, okay? But it also says those are the prime areas for agricultural development. So it's almost contradictory. And then it says that these areas are really good for ag development, so you want to keep your farmland, but it's also really good for development, so go ahead and develop it. And so my thought on that, and after talking, like I said, with Dave, was if we kind of looked at maybe a three to five area that wasn't, but had restrictions on, the memorandum of understanding, you're going to be moving to the country. Here's what's going to happen. You know, you're not platted, but. And try to make sure, if people can, do the ten acres, but provide a good case for why they can't.
I think the question becomes is, how many of them do you have per year? Whether they should, like other counties, have them come with the Planning Commission?
This, this last week, I had five.
Really?
Wow. Well, I think there's a bigger growth of people wanting to buy a piece of land in the country, in the country. And I think farmers are entertaining those sales more now than they ever have before. So we've got to stay up on that, because I think that's where the trend's going. And if you drive from Harrington up here, I've been on this commission four years, I think now. It's amazing how many homes are built. And they're, like you said, all along the county roads and main roads. And I don't know how many acres they've bought, but most of them sit within fifteen hundred or two thousand feet of the road. Some of them sit back a little bit further. And I don't know whether they're homeowner, or landowners to start with that have just built new homes, or if they're people that have bought a parcel. But there's quite a few.
There's a lot.
It sure is important that we look at the economic development of Dickinson County. But we need to remember that Dickinson County is, not that there aren't a lot of businesses, but Dickinson County is fueled by agriculture. And we have to remain ag-friendly if we want our young farmers to stay here. And at least in our part of the country, or the county, we've had a lot of dissension among people who have moved in, who have built and moved in, and then they don't like, they don't like the late hours. I mean, farmers try to be good neighbors, but they don't like that. We have had notes left in our tractors because we drove through at two o'clock in the morning. We've had, we've had letters that weren't nice because they thought, we're the only ones that live on our, on our section. Our closest neighbors are three fourths of a mile away. And yet, three of those four have moved in, they're not ag, and we've had letters written because of the smell of our livestock. And so, you know, it's...
The county needs to have like a yearly, I don't know, education session for those that are entertaining moving to the country and having, you know, and, and these issues introduced to them before they actually make the purchase of their land or anything.
See, we have, we have a little flyer that we're supposed to give out, you know, and, and, and nobody, nobody looks at it. They're like, oh, okay, yeah, we're living. That's why I was thinking the memorandum of understanding. Make them sign something that says...
I agree.
That says that I understand that these things happen.
It's like you said, we can't stop people from selling their land, if they're going to want to sell it, but, you know. Like complaining about what you're moving into that was there way before you bought your land is ridiculous.
Yes.
Well, and sometimes I think some of these complaints are coming from some of the people that probably weren't the original person that built that house. They built it, moved on, sold it to somebody else. And now we've got somebody in there that doesn't have any idea what country living's about. It just looked good, because the house was, someone liked it.
And that's the thing, is we're not going to catch everybody, because, you know, if, if you guys decided to up and sell, you know, sell everything, somebody would move in. And if they're not splitting land, you know, we're not, we're not going to catch everybody with a memorandum of understanding. It's only going to be for people who are splitting off land.
I can understand.
Donita, how could a person, how could, you know, based on your comment, how could a person be sure and, and, do you have a thought in mind to, to help make that happen?
Yeah, I, you know, I know, like, like you said, the bankers were saying three acres, but that does make it more accessible, I guess, to a larger number of people. I can understand why people want to live in the country. I mean, goodness, that's the best place, you know, I, you love it. But when, when they're wanting to live in the country because it's easy to buy three acres and, you know, the fresh air, the, you know, but I don't want to put up with all this other stuff type of thing. And so I guess, I, I would be cautious about changing it from the ten acres, just because. But that's a good question.
Well, the memorandum of understanding, question I have, legality wise, because they signed that piece of paper, how does that stand up when we have to listen to them come in here about what I don't like about something? Will it stand up and say, hey, look, you signed this, we're, we're not open to hearing what you have to say?
Or would we be better served to have them come in front of us? Granted, we might be very busy with these requests, but, you know, have them come in front of us where we can all look them in the eye and say, this is what you're going to face, and we don't want you coming back and complaining about the farming traffic.
That's what I need to talk to Doug about.
I mean, you know, we want to look them in the eye and make them state their case in front of us, so we can also state our case to them about, if you're sure you want to buy this three acres, but you darn well better not come back and complain or, or be rude to your neighbors.
I know some realtors would be not real thrilled with having all of their prospects have to come and sit in front of the zoning board and get grilled. That's not what we do, but that's how they view it.
Yeah.
I, as a Realtor, I think disclosure is the most important thing. It keeps us from being sued. So if we're forced to disclose these items and we're forced to go through these steps to achieve this goal, I'm all for it. But I might be an exception to the rule. Out of the forty-six realtors in Dickinson County, I might be one of the few that's all about having them come before the board.
I appreciate both points. I mean, I know we want to be responsive to where the trend is going, that, you know, if the banks are, are not loaning money for ten to twenty acres, I under, you know, we want to be responsive to that. But I also understand your concerns about, you know, we let every Tom, Dick and Harry buy three acres, three acres, three acres, three acres. You know, eventually down the road, we're not going to have any country left.
And that's, that's actually why I wanted to leave it within the ag forty or rural residential area. That way, anything past half a mile of paved roads, they're still in the ag, they're still in the ag eighty, you got to have twenty acres or more. Anything past half a mile of paved roads. I, I was looking at this being more along paved roads, within half mile of a paved road.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That makes more sense.
And, and we still have the, we still have to fall back on the fact that if they have forty acres to split, they can split one time without having to plaid.
And do an administrative split.
Right. And that one time, right now is ten. What I'm, what I'm talking about is making that one time split, three, five, something else, but they still can only do it once. And then they have to plaid it from there. So it's, it's...
That makes sense.
It allows what we already have to be a little less restrictive, but at the same time maintaining what I would, what I would look at as, as the agricultural land, especially past that half mile. So that every, you know, you still have to have that twenty acres if you're past there. But if you're within that half mile of a paved road, we can work with it.
Because one of the other issues we discussed was the person that wants to build the house five miles from a paved road at the end of the, at the end, at the end of the road. And then they, then if you get it built, then they want to talk to the township guy about rocking the road on the way up a paving, you know.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
With as many paved roads as we have in Dickinson County, though. Well, like when we were going to expand our feed lot, the four people, one, two, three, four, five people that said, oh... people that said, oh, we don't want the smell, they were all within a half mile of a paved road. So... So the number of the paved roads you're saying could not necess, I mean, it may not be, are you saying that the paved road idea may not be the route to go? What are you saying? As much paved road as we had, there's a lot of opportunity for a half mile... For building, okay. A paved road. Got it.
Let me see if I can pull this up, it'll give us a little bit better visual.
Something else to think about is, on a farmstead, there can be a lot of machinery, my tractors, my four-wheelers, my buildings, my trucks, my trailers, and all of that is tax exempt. The county gets no revenue off that. If we, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah.
So I can have a million dollars' worth of, or more, of mobile assets out there and buildings, and the county gets nothing off of, other than my house.
Trucks, trucks they do.
And then, but if there's, but if, one of the things I think about is if we're, if we're thinking about, you know, the only way that government, i.e. the county, increases their revenue is either increased tax base or increased taxes. And so, the amount of tax base that's increased in the county, if Donita sells off three acres to somebody and they plant a Morton building, and they plant a big house, and they plant a motor home, and they plant a boat, there's a fair, there's a whole lot more revenue to the county that comes off that three, three acres, five acres, ten acres, whatever. There's a whole lot more revenue to the county off that than if it's in CRP or grass, like I have, or beans and minnow like Donita has. So I kind of see both sides, because I'm, you know, I'm involved in the ag side too, but the county isn't long on revenue, and certainly a person doesn't want to be irresponsible and just throw everything to the wind willy-nilly, but there's a whole lot more revenue to the county in a three-acre or five-acre homestead than there is in three or five acres of CRP or pasture or row crops.
On that, if you would like a comparison, the city of Abilene has about three to five new homes built a year. Last year, we had thirty-four.
That's why I'm seeing so many more.
In Abilene?
In Dickinson County.
In Dickinson County.
Thirty-four?
Thirty-four.
Wow.
Most of those were small land splits, most of those were people bought forty, fifty acres and, or got it and dirted or the like, but I know of at least probably seven or eight that would have been built allowing for a smaller size of parcel. So there's that, you know, playing devil's advocate on that, there's that.
Do you think those are new people living into Dickinson County, or they were people that just transplanted out of the city to the rural area?
A little bit of both. A lot of them seem to be coming from, from the area, like Abilene, Chapman, or the like, and they just want to move out to the country. Some of them have been from other, from other counties moving in.
I mean, increased population's a big deal, too.
School.
What you're looking at is our current zoning map, you're looking at the whole county. The green blobs are the incorporated cities or large plats, and everything in dark gray is everything that would be considered half mile of paved road. Now, what that can mean is if there's a, if there's a tract of land that's one hundred and sixty acres, and a piece of that, if a border of that is within half mile, that whole parcel is considered ag forty, because a piece of that parcel is within that district. That's just the mapping software. So that's, that's just how the mapping software works, you say every parcel within half mile of paved road, and anything that's within half mile of paved road, it counts.
One side of it touches it, it's considered.
It's considered. So not all of this is that bad, but it's pretty close.
Yeah.
You run into that far less than you do the fact that these are within half mile of paved road. You can kind of see what that looks like when you get these big straight edges here, that's accurate to within half mile of a paved road. Because what you've got here is, this would be Eden, this would be Highway Four, you know, you've got fifteen here, so to give you an idea, you know, Old Forty, I-70 doesn't count unless it has a paved exit. Eighteen, so in terms of county coverage, that's what you're looking at. So then, when you see these little chunks in here, someone like this one, someone has sold land, and it now became, by the map, it became what we would consider ag eighty, because that piece is past half mile. This one, this little piece here, technically, that little line is within half mile, but this piece here is attached to out here, so the mapping software, like I said, it has its errors.
Yeah. When you look up there on the south, south side of Highway eighteen between Jeep and Highway fifteen, north of Abilene, you're, yeah, right there, see, it's almost solid, but a lot of that is, like you said, if one side of it touches a half a mile.
Plus, you've got, like, right north of Abilene where it starts to bulge out like this, that's where you've got some of the developments going in up there. So, you know, you've got, there are, we had, I ran a list, there are eighty-one subdivisions outside of city limits in the county.
Really?
Now, that includes things like, that includes Detroit, that includes Talmadge, and they have three or four subdivisions in each, so, you know, that includes those. So you're actually looking at a closer number of about forty, about half that, are actual standalone subdivisions, not in what we would call a village district, Navarre, Talmadge, that kind of thing.
And definition for subdivision is just that they've been plat, they've been subdivided, it's not necessarily a subdivision of twenty-nine mobile homes, it's been plat from one side or something like that?
Right. Like, up here, there's, there's the Gibson plat, and it's like four pieces, and it's because they wanted to plat off land for their family, and because of that whole, you've already split the land once, you gotta plat it, do it again, they would have hadn't plat But that's why I didn't want to throw a regulation at you guys, I wanted to talk about it and see, you know, because, because I think, like we said, economically, we have to do something, but I also, you know, based on the comprehensive plan, we need to keep ag-ag, so we have to try to find a happy medium. In two thousand nine, the happy medium was the ten acres, because banks were loaning on it. That's not necessarily the case anymore.
But that's because land values have gone up so much.
Land values have gone up, and loans aren't as secure, people aren't throwing out loans willy-nilly anymore.
They've got more, banks have more regulation, too, that they have to adhere to, so they're more conservative. And Dickinson County is kind of unique with Junction City, Fort Riley right there, and then I-70, and basically, Solana is just right over there, southern Dickinson County, and maybe even the very northern part of Dickinson County is a different environment than kind of like right along that I-70, Solomon, Junction City, Abilene corridor.
And we have an interesting challenge to solve, and it is, is we have a limited number of houses, and people are living so much longer, and we have so many family homes that are now being occupied by one person. You know, this would be a perfect residence for a teacher or something, but, you know, it's a real challenge for us, finding housing for teachers that come into the district.
You're natural in Harrison, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of folks that would like to build or find a few acres close to Chapman, or, you know, right up here close to Gary County. I would doubt there'd be as many that would want to go three miles south of Carlton. I would think there'd be a lot different interest level there.
Most of, most of my requests have been within three to five miles of a town.
So do we, do we identify that and acknowledge that, and do, to kind of segue off what Donita was saying, do we have the authority or the ability to, I don't know what, call it metropolitan ag residential influence areas, and allow those three-acre pieces within, I don't know, five miles of Abilene, five miles of Chapman, and leave, protect the things that Donita's talking about? And just a thought.
That's a good thought.
And in respect to that, most people that are looking to purchase, they do not want to be further than ten miles from town, they don't. The people that are wanting to transplant, because for whatever reason they want to get out of town, they're, a large portion of them say, I want to be within five miles, I want to be within six miles, because I have this, 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 and this as my reasoning, but I don't want to be in the middle of town. So he's correct with that, most buyers, they're gonna leave alone the area up there by Longford and Manchester and all of that, they want to be close to Chapman, they want to be close to Abilene, they want to be close to Junction, because they still want to be able to fulfill their needs, but they don't want to be in the middle of where they can fulfill their needs. So he is correct with that, it may be a good idea.
So is there linkage to the schools? Is that one of the concepts that would drive that, is Abilene school, Solomon school, Chapman school, Harrington school, you know, if they're within X miles of a school, because really, that's another economic driver, if you can support those schools, maintain or improve the numbers there, that has an economic impact in the communities.
This is roughly Abilene's district, Solomon's district, Hope's district, Harrington's district, everything else is Chapman.
Yeah, I'm not saying the district, I'm saying the city, the school, the physical location, so...
I was like, because I got on the bus at six forty-five in the morning.
That's a bus trip.
Wasn't there something from the cities that they addressed us some time back about, you know, areas of influence around the cities, you know, they wanted to be involved, but what do they, what do we call that?
It's an area of influence, and it was originally, it was anything within a mile and a half, and it's been dropped down to a thousand feet. It's basically anything within our notification area.
Okay.
So...
The area of influence is a thousand feet?
It's anything, if there's anything large subdivision, stuff like that, they've left it to a mile, but for developments and stuff, the smaller developments and stuff, it's a thousand feet.
A thousand feet from where?
From the city, from the city.
From the city limits?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, like, well, yeah, so for instance, with Abilene Products, that was within a thousand feet of the city limits, so I had to notify Abilene that they were doing, that we were doing something, they had to notify me back that they were okay, or weren't okay with what we were doing, and that's why you saw some of the Abilene officials here, because they were at the meeting, because it was within the area of influence. But it was in the area of influence by two hundred feet, to give you an example of how close it actually is to the border.
How does floodplain impact this as well?
Well, you should ask.
Like in Solomon, we basically can't build south of town, we have to go to north, and then we're, then we're landlocked by Interstate Seventy, getting services underneath Interstate Seventy is just...
When you're dealing with floodplain, oddly enough, the floodplain, for the most part, follows the paved roads. Because those are, because those are the best areas of development, those are the best places where you can get water. I'll try to zoom in a little bit here, so I can show you the overlay, if it'll show Now, they, you know, south of town, they start to dwindle past a certain footage, but we turn off the zoning rear. Let me see if I can back out and show the whole thing, of course, it's not gonna be that nice to me, is it? We'll just do the Abilene area here. There's floodplain maps. So here's eighteen, Highway Fifteen. For the most part, you're looking at the river, being a very wide section of floodplain. Floodplain development as far as the river goes, yes, they can still develop, my predecessor had a big issue with people developing in the floodplain, but legally, they can. It's, that's fifteen thousand feet across, it's not necessarily its widest, but to give you an example.
So that's almost three miles.
That's almost three miles across.
Have they adjusted the floodplain map yet?
No, these are still the nineteen eighty-eight maps, and we're expecting to maintain those for an undetermined amount of time.
I thought they were gonna redo them.
They were, until Sandy.
Oh, okay.
Now, all the funding that was supposed to be there got diverted to coastal regions again, just like after Katrina, so...
Okay.
They kept telling us three to five years, and now it's five to ten.
Nice.
However, we do have our best, as far as floodplain goes, we're allowed to use what we have, we consider best knowledge, and we have, now we have LiDAR data in the GIS office that has up to one foot of variance, so we can actually see and do hydrology studies.
So you've gotten the results of that?
Yeah. The GIS technician under Sherry's been working on it pretty heavy, so... But floodplain, as far as the development goes, is no more of an issue than it normally is, because it's pretty restrictive to begin with. The three acres, five acres, ten acres, twenty acres, doesn't matter at that point.
But it would drive some people in certain directions from a city?
Yes.
Because like, you'd have to be north of Solomon almost to develop there, and probably north of Chapman even, I would guess, north and west.
For the most part, but Chapman Creek floods quite a bit, too, so, like, that new development that they're doing on the north part of Chapman is actually right in here where this floodzone is, so they've got to lift it, they've got to get state permits and all that stuff. So it's not, like I said, it's not impossible. It's, honestly, within probably a thousand feet of the river is called floodway or within Mud Creek, but past there is, can still be developed, it's just a question of how high.
How much you want to spend to do it.
And FEMA maps are based on plus or minus five-foot contours, so your house could be three foot above the floodplain, and unless it's six feet, they don't care until you shoot elevation and prove that it's out of the floodplain. On average, most of these homes out in this area are out of the floodplain, because they're high enough up. But, but it is a factor in determining where people will build houses. There's a house, for instance, on Old Forty, only has half an acre, and it's right up against the, it's right up against the river tracks, it's a little Morton building just to the east of Detroit, and it's on the south side of Old Forty. And it's actually a house, but it hasn't sold, because it's in the floodplain, and people keep wanting to do stuff with it, and I'm like, okay, but you're gonna have to do these, and nobody wants it if they have to do that. The only interest I've had on it is using it as a kennel, so...
People have tried to buy it, you know, but VA kicks it out, it's now in the appraisal system, so any government-backed loan, of course, is going to kick it out because of the floodplain.
Well...
So just to be clear, we're not, we're not talking about loosening up our sense that we don't want to promote development in floodplain, we're not backing off that, are we?
No, 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 I just, I just actually adhere to what they give me instead of just flat saying, no. It's a, you know, we recommend not doing it, but if you really are adamant, here's what FEMA requires.
Okay, and then with that also, if they do build there and there is a flood, then that puts extra burden on county services, flooded, I need help getting out. Can, is that another example of where, you know, you hate to have a whole list of, you know, this is our idiot list, if you're gonna build a floodplain, you acknowledge this, if you're gonna build right south of your feedlot, you're gonna acknowledge this. But would that be another example of where, just to maybe try to limit liability down the road, but...
Any building in the floodplain has to adhere to regulations where they're out of the floodplain, they have to build a foot above the floodplain.
Okay, so they have to elevate it.
Yes.
They can build there, but they have to elevate it.
They have to, yeah.
Do they have to elevate the approach to it, so they can get out on their own?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not just the structure?
Nope.
It's the approach, and the approach is, has to be per county, to support county vehicles?
Yep, it has to be at least thirty foot wide, and all the way back and all that.
Okay.
So that tends to, people build a lot closer to the road at that point.
They shy away from doing it.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that, I don't detect a consensus this evening, but probably you need to explore this a little more, some of the ideas that you've put a little more meat on the bone, so to speak, because we don't want to be an impediment to development, we also want to be sensitive somehow to the people that move next to a feedlot, and then five years later, they sell it, and the next people don't pay attention and buy it, and then start complaining about it. That really irritates me.
Oh, yeah, no, and I completely get that, and that's, I actually think, since you brought it up, I think that the, putting a, essentially a radius or just a zone outside of town for that kind of development would actually adhere to the comprehensive plan pretty well.
I like saying the paved roads, but I think that's a little broad, I agree with James, I think we need something a little more restrictive, a guide.
In essence, if you're three miles from Chapman, you can buy three acres, is kind of what you're saying about it?
Yeah, but if you're, you know, if you're past a certain distance, then...
Right.
Because as, and the problem is, is as it is right now, the reason that I brought up the zoning map... I brought up the zoning map, is yes, it shows, you know, like I said, it has errors. The problem is, is those errors are legal errors. What that means is, if a piece of that parcel touches within that distance, it's considered Ag forty. So, now, once they split it and they make new parcels, then it's a whole new ballgame. But until they do that, it's considered as close as it is. Because, like, for instance, right down here, it's Ag forty surrounded by Ag eighty, because this piece here, now, it's way bigger than it was supposed to be. That piece there has that little L down there that is within half a mile of a paved road. This piece isn't. So, when you get to it, you know, you're looking at, like, right here, for instance, if I take off the zoning, this piece right here is a pretty good example of what we're, what we're talking about. That piece of land is, is exactly, by the looks of it, five acres. So if they did, if, by the current zoning, to give you an idea of perspective, it's a little bit longer than the six, or a little bit shorter than the six sixty, but then six sixty comes down to there. So, this new line, that you can't really see all that well, is what the, is what the current zoning requires in Ag forty. It's doubled that in length and width for Ag twenty, for Ag eighty, which is where it is. This parcel is currently considered legal non-conforming, because it's smaller than the required lot size for Ag eighty, which, in that area, I find perfectly acceptable, because it's, it's a farm area, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have land that big, then, as far as I'm concerned, then you can throw down twenty acres.
Does that person live with the five acres or whatever? Do they own the rest of the land? Or do you know?
Let's find out, I can tell you in a second. It's on by Kevin White here. And that's on by Stephen Cox. No, it's not. So there's just a, a visual of what you're talking about. Because they would have to go all the way to here, and down to about, probably here, for the Ag eighty area.
It appears almost that, that trying to write something in the regulations to address the anomalies that we have may be a challenge.
Well, it, it wouldn't be for anomalies, it would be, it would be there forward.
Because it's already there, they're grandfathered.
They would be grandfathered, but it would be there forward. And, so what I, what I can do is, I can get the verbiage from the comprehensive plan, and we can, we can look that over, because the comprehensive plan does hit very heavily on economic development, but it hits just as heavy, if not heavier, on agricultural development. So, and maintaining what we have agricultural. So it's, this, this is going to be a pretty good-sized task, but I think it's something that we need to have a curve on, as far as.
The more I think about it, the more I'd like to see something in writing, you know, versus, and I don't know exactly how Marion County does it, but, I mean, it sounds all well good to have somebody come in front of, you know, the planning commission and state their case why they need a variance or whatever, but, I mean, we all know that this board changes, you know, every couple of years, every three years, and different people, and if you don't have, you know, a set guidelines to go by, or something already written down, I mean...
You didn't realize this was a life sentence?
Hey, hey, hey.
She hasn't got that paperwork.
I signed on for another three. I'm doing my, my duty here. But, I mean, you know, eventually, there's different people on here, and so if you're just having somebody come in front of this board, and you don't have anything set to be going by.
My personal opinion would be that I, I would hate to bug you guys with as many land revision stuff as I can. Because what would happen is, if I can't answer that question, it's instantly going to be a, it's not a no for me. I don't just say no, I go, "Okay, I can't answer this, you're gonna have to go in front of the planning commission." So I'm gonna need two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to ask them for permission, and if they say no, you're out. Which is how it is anytime comes, you know, anyone comes in front of you guys.
We need to work to make it as administrative as possible, make a uniform, and then I'm also not a fan of using Marion County as a model. Great folks, I, I know most of the folks down there, but in the, in the county government, the clerk and the commissioners, but that's not the same county as ours. We're, we're a different animal. We'd be closer to Gary County or Celine County.
The, the reason I was suggesting is because Dave Yerow wrote it. The guy that wrote these wrote that one. So.
I would, and like James said, I would be interested, I mean, we're obviously not the first county to face this.
No.
And, and, you know.
Gary County is the one that actually, because like I said, I was talking to Dave, and he said, "We've got this model," and in Marion County, like, like James said, he goes, "They're using this model," which is a little different, they're having everyone come in front of the planning commission, but, but they've, down there, they've got a lot of, you're in the middle, because that's where the water is.
Yeah.
We have a lot less and less of that as time goes on.
Well, even, you know, counties past Gary and Celine, I mean, as you go east, I mean, obviously, other counties have had to deal with this more and more outside Topeka, and I'd just be interested to see how they, they've handled it. I'd, I'd like, James, I'd like to see something kind of uniform, so that, you know, even as planning commissioners change.
Well, Bunsey County.
Yeah.
I was thinking of little Bunsey and Pot.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I can, I'm, I'm part of the Kansas Association of Planning and Zoners, is I can just send out an email and say, "Hey, we're looking at adjusting this, what do you guys do?" And there tends to be about ten, fifteen responses from other counties.
I think staying ahead of the curve and adjusting it in some way is good, but, I mean, and I would've discussed a lot of good options here, too, so.
Okay.
Good discussion.
I'll, I'll try, I'll try to pull as much, as much information as I can together, because I'll also get some western, some western county stuff, because western county, or the, the western counties, they deal a lot with, "We've got six hundred and forty acres and no one's touching it." Period. I mean, that's, you know, "We own a section and you're not splitting it." So, so I can get a broad spectrum of, of, you know, how, how different counties can handle that.
Well, not just, well, how it used to be around here, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's kinda my attitude, I, I don't have sections, I don't have any neighbors.
Yes, as those numbers have died off, that's changing.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I'm finding the most of, is people come in and go, you know, "Hey, my, my parents, my grandpa, my grandparents just passed away, and, you know, we wanna sell the home site off, but keep the farmland in our name, you know, how, how do we do that?" And I go, "Okay, well, you gotta split off this acreage by this acreage and, and sell it," and, you know, and, and, you know, a lot of times, people feel, "Oh, does Ag lot splits?" And they'll do that, and, but the problem is, is they end up having a hard time selling it or whatnot because of the ten acres. And, and like I said, as far as, as far as my job goes, it's, it is, it is what it is. It's either, you know, I, I am okay enforcing whichever one I enforce, but I'm just noticing a, a larger increase in the trend of people looking to get the three to five acres, and banks lending on only three to five acres. For instance, Gary Longnecker, and I talked, and he said, he goes, "Flat out, I'm gonna ask people, if they have ten or fifteen, I'm gonna ask them for a five, for a five-acre mortgage split, just to loan on that." He goes, "If they're looking to buy ten acres, I only wanna, I will only loan on five." Which means that they have to go in and get it split, which is against the regulations, that they can't split it, because they need the ten acres. They can't have two fives. For mortgage purposes. So, they can go get the survey done to split it and all that, but if they file it as a separate deed, they can't do it, as far as my office is concerned, because now there's two parcels.
The bankers need to be updated as to what our zoning regulations are?
They don't care.
They don't care.
Because they have their own banking.
Yeah.
Well, because what they're looking at is, if a guy has to buy ten acres, and he has to give ten, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars an acre for the land, suddenly, there's no way, I mean, you have to have pretty deep pockets to afford that. And so they wanna back that up, so they're only loaning thirty thousand on the land.
Well, and, and they're pretty aware that they're not gonna get their investment back. If, if somebody defaults on that, they're not gonna get their investment back. Which, again, is not a problem of this board.
Right.
You know, it's not our problem, it's not a problem of this board. But the development of Dickinson County is the problem of this board, and...
Yeah.
Well, and, and the control of development, that's the issue.
Exactly.
We wanna make sure we maintain control of development, not cat hell or sculpture. So you're kinda, just more brainstorming on this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull some, I'll pull some information together. Now, let's see, I will be gone in June, that's when I go to Connecticut for the floodplain stuff, the, the national conference up there. I had to get a state scholarship and stuff to, to go, but, so we won't have a June meeting, but if you'd like, I can get information together for a May meeting. We don't have anything on the agenda, so this would all, all it would be. And I'm, I'm happy to get that information together.
Do you have time to do that?
Yeah.
Well, it would be better to wait till July. Give me more time?
Oh, I'm, I'm okay right now to do that.
But you've got enough time.
I've got enough.
It's a good discussion to have, because we don't have a lot of other issues.
We're, we're looking at, I can tell you, a lot more cell phone towers coming in here soon again, so that'll probably be a late summer thing, I've gotten already a bunch of phone calls about it. So that would be May fourteenth, that would be, uh, may fourteenth. If you guys are interested, let me know, and I can do the work on it, because I'm also with the appraisers office, out doing data collection late in the summer, so.
If you have the ability, let's, don't procrastinate, if there's more stuff coming, let's get it talked about, if you have the ability to put it together.
Okay.
But some of us appreciate no June meeting.
Well, you know.
Right, Donita?
Yep.
So, and if you, if you guys want to, feel free to email me your input and that kinda thing, so I can put it together, what you feel would be a good, a good adjustment, a bad adjustment, because I can take all that stuff into account when, when we're working on language and stuff, because I'll probably get information together, we'll sit down, we'll hash out what we're looking at, and then we'll take what we're looking at, and I can take it to Doug to put formal language on it. And that, you guys would have to approve later, but it'll be a process.
Well, I think you definitely should look at the concept of a, a zone around the city somehow.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. Because it kinda, like I said, I'll have to dig into the comprehensive plan a little bit more to see how that, how that directs, because, as I said, it says that the areas around the paved roads are good for development, so keep them ag. And, so, because it recommends, recommends highly developing those areas, not, it recommends, highly, highly recommends developing those areas, but, you know, they, it also says, "But it's perfect agricultural farm ground, so make sure you maintain that." You can't really do both unless, you know, so, because let's, let's not, let's not forget that also, if somebody wants to develop a subdivision out there, they can develop a, you know, fourteen lot, one acre a piece subdivision, if they got the room and the ability. So it doesn't prevent those things, it just makes it easier for some people, but also more difficult for others, and it's, it's gonna be a toss-up. So, but I just didn't, you know, I just didn't wanna, want people to forget that there are still subdivisions out there that people can do. They can still throw that information, or throw the request for a subdivision. For instance, I've been in, I guess you would say, at-distance conversation with somebody looking at developing seventeen hundred and Deer Road into a twenty-acre subdivision with one-acre lots.
Oh, no.
What would they do for water and septic?
Well, that's, that's part of it, they have to be on real water, and real water is out there. But septic would be, you know, up to them, and that's the thing, is technically, we have to have two and a half acres, so, for septic.
Can they get new meters for real water?
I don't know if they can get that many, but that's not up to me. I know, I know with individual residents, because I, I called and talked to that, so, but I don't know about twenty.
Yeah.
So, and it would kinda be as they come, so.
I think of, one at Talmadge, their engineer said, "Five hundred meters, when those are gone, they're gone."
Yeah, that's kinda how.
And it's kinda like you said, first come, first served.
Yeah.
The only way, if you were gonna sell me a lot in a subdivision, the only way you could really disclose and say, "We're gonna guarantee you," you'd have to buy it.
You'd have to buy them.
Yeah, and then, that would be part of my purpose, yeah.
So, but, again, that, that may be something on the horizon, which means, you know, that there, there, those possibilities are out there, so.
Maybe I may focus on it, just take three hundred and twenty and subdivide it.